Can I say something?
Yeah.
I think what needs to be done is that the commissioners need to talk to the Graham County Tourism slash Graham County Festivals Inc. and see what's going on because their stuff is paid through, the finances of Graham County. Am I not correct?
Travel and Tourism?
Yes.
What's their relationship to Graham County?
Graham County Festivals Inc. is under Graham County Tourism.
That's where they get the money from.
So, that's why I think they're approaching Graham County Commissioners. It's because you guys are over them.
See, when I first asked about maybe splitting up, I was told, "Well, if you do, you don't have the money and you're starting out like $12,000 in the hole because you're not getting money and you owe for fireworks." But see, they also donate to Spickel and Fontana and they don't get to dictate exactly how those are ranked, correct? I mean, they receive funds from Travel and Tourism and from Graham County and from RTA and they don't get to dictate like, "Hey, you can't have a bouncy house because we just don't like it." Because it's never been that way, right? So, we want the funding, we want the help, we want to be backed, but we don't want to be dictated to where we don't even get a choice. And the things we do vote on and choose get trumped in the bigger place and we're able to do it anyways. So, what's the plan of having a committee when you don't give them any authority to vote on anything that actually means anything?
I don't see the point of having a committee to vote.
Right, and a chair.
We've already got a board dictator.
But the board didn't want to do it, so that's why Dale Wiggens sat in here that day and said, "Hey, put Audie as your chair," and we all voted, that was fine. Connie is no chair, and then later on we appointed Amanda's secretary, which that was fine. So, why are we kind of set up that way, but yet we don't have any authority on any of it to actually make decisions?
I don't think that's...I'm not sure. I think that that was set up in a pinch, but there's no real authority behind it at least.
So, if all of these individuals just join this...join us community members or just up the Festival, Graham County Festival Board, can they push the issue of allocating the board members?
Board members vote, board members.
Well, then that means that board members would have to change.
Right.
Natasha, you're a board member.
The first board director shall decide whether persons elected by the incorporates were named as the initial board directors and a certificate of cooperation on the corporation and they shall hold office until the first annual meeting of members and until their successors have been duly elected and qualified thereafter. At each annual meeting, members of membership shall elect directors to hold office until the next annual meeting.
We were told we were board members, me, Bobby, Natasha, I believe you, and Shorty, and then we were told, "No, we wasn't." And then we were sent...someone was sent a message by Dale that said, "Maybe..."we didn't do it correctly, so maybe nobody's a board member." So, that's what we were going on.
We don't know any better than you where we need to start, but something needs to change.
We'll go have our time to raise a ball, Austin.
And the Festivals Inc. events is part of the projected expenditures of Travel and Tourism Authority.
Correct.
So, they do need to...I mean, their board most likely needs to have a say so in the festivals that they're funding.
See, and we asked for...I have asked for, like, on our budget to see what we've got left because originally we were told that the fireworks were completely covered, that was not part of our budget. The advertising was completely covered, that was not part of our budget. The insurance was covered, that was not part of our budget. But then come to find out, we went over budget because we had insurance that we had to pay and because we had not the fireworks, that money did get donated, but then we had advertising expense that we were supposed to pay. So, it's all jacked up and that's why we just want to be separate. We want to have our own stuff, do our own thing, but we still are going to be funding from the county, from RTA, from the Travel and Tourism to help put on a good event.
Let me do that.
That's fine, but at least you're aware and know kind of where we're sitting because if not...
I couldn't understand why at first we were being told that we had to basically try and bring in the same amount of money that we're being allowed to budget with.
Yes.
And if this is basically funded by TDA tax, I don't know why we have to worry about replacing it.
Yes, we were told originally that whatever we used and budgeted for, we needed to try to figure out another place or make that money to put back in that account. But if it's being...I mean, if it's being donated, why are we giving back?
Or funded by TDA, that's money that needs to be spent to put on events like this.
Okay. It's all fair and fair, we have to go to our scheduled meeting.
Am I not allowed to speak? Yeah, and I've got to say something.
Go for it.
One second. My grandson, everybody that volunteered, he worked through sweltering conditions, best of your best, there was an issue with urgent care. We tried to rectify that as quickly as possible to people to get in. But the other issue that you've got that is a major issue, Graham County can be sued for putting that on and you do not have handicap or special need access. You can't do that with any activity that you have. In 78, they passed a law on ADA and 90, they superseded that and even made it stronger and stoutier. There are people that need to get to that and they could not get to that. My grandson was one of those, we never got into it Monday. Steve put some places and he told me that people took them. They need transit to transport, to have one designated spot to pick them up with a wheelchair and get them to where they need to go, or if it's oxygen or whatever. Some of our seniors could not get in 90 Park. 11% of the population in the United States has special needs or handicapped. You cannot deny them access. You will end up sued and anybody can file a lawsuit on that. So, it's imperative in the future that we work together and we talk about this because we would have provided the transportation. We provided it for years till they said they didn't need us anymore.
We asked if transit could do it and somebody told us that they had spoken to you and what...
They did not speak to me. They did not speak. And when Audi mentioned it to me, I said, "That's not true. The town told us they didn't need us about four years ago, that they didn't need us anymore." And they've never contacted me and I told Natasha and I told Jessica, I told Steve, "When you have the meetings, I want to be informed." We need to plan and do this correctly till our seniors and the people with disabilities can attend any activity in this county that is not fire and is discrimination. That's what my main concern is and that's what I'm here for. That's the only thing I wanted to tell you, okay?
Thank you. You're welcome. And I totally agree with you too. But I don't think that was the town that would have said that. That was probably the director of the Graham County Festivals Inc. that said that. Now, this is what I'm here to say for the town. You guys use the town maintenance guys every year, have for years. Well, then, our new financial thing has came up to where that we're having to break down their time. They're not covered under town insurance because they're not doing a town function because it's a Graham County function. So, now they have decided that they are going to pay the town employees for their services. And they did work hard for the Graham County Festivals Inc. to make sure that this event went off. They worked hard. We have got a bill for that, but we've also come to you guys to ask for your attorney to draw up some kind of a contractual agreement to cover our town employees to help with these events that the Graham County Committee does.
Between Graham County Festivals Inc. and your employees?
Yes, mhm. And we have mailed Graham County a bill for their services. And I don't know if you've got it, but if you don't care, I'm going to go ahead and give you my copy of it. That's all I'm here to ask for is for you guys to draw up a contract with them.
Just a demo here to understand what both parties ask. Yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
I'm going to have to figure out the board commissioners' relationship to all this.
Okay.
Because I don't know, I don't know what it is, but none of us do.
Thank you.
So, we'll do some research. This is not going to be something that's going to be solved in the first minute conversation at that o'clock, so.
We got a group of good people that want to work.
And we want to cover our butts too. So, that was one of our big issues was the insurance and liability waivers and...yeah. Because we don't want personally sued because somebody up there gets hurt.
Nobody wants to sue us for sure.
I think you're really good in just like being here at the festival and work hard. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it for sure.
I'd like to personally thank each and every one of y'all for your greatest donation to the first festival here. I appreciate everything that y'all give.
Thank you. So, we're good.
All right, I thought this Graham County Board of Commissioners meeting order. Members of the Graham County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby to adjutant the state government that has acted to avoid conflicts and members to be in pairs with such conflict. Further, are instructed to refrain from participating in any round of conference before this forum and county commissioners will respect to which there is conflict members who are in pairs with such conflict. Commissioner County will be very professional. Let's pray.
Good day, Heavenly Father, and just thank you for everything that you do for us. And Father, we just ask that you just give us patience and understanding. And Father, we just ask that you just continue just to watch over us and just protect us. Father, we ask that you just continue just to be where those are sick and ill and we just lift them up to you. And Father, again, we're just so thankful for everything that you do for us and just protect us and just watch over us. In your precious and homeless name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the public which stands on nation, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Grab the mushroom burger again. Is there a second? Second, I'm dying. That's ours, right forward.
All right. Good evening. I've got two things. I'll start. Number one, I go around about every year and do just kind of an annual update for the Southwestern Commission. And then I've got a digital literacy plan that we've put together with the help of citizens from Graham County that need some action at some point, so I'll present that to you all as well. So, I'm Russ Harris, the Executive Director of the Southwestern Commission, where the Council of Governments for the seven far western counties here in North Carolina, the towns within those counties, and the eastern band of Cherokee Indians. And in front of you, I think Kim has copied our annual report for you all, and I'll just give a couple of broad updates and kind of highlights from that. But we are owned by the local governments in the west and so this time of year, come around to share our updates, thank you all for your support. One of the ways that you all support us, the local governments in the west, support us is by paying dues to our organization. Last year, those dues equaled about $155,000. With that money, we were able to leverage that to bring in an additional $20 million into the region. Our mission is to improve the quality of life in the region and we do that through the work of our four departments, which are Community and Economic Development, Workforce Development, the Area Agency on Aging, and our newest department, the Mountain West Partnership. Our workforce department has funds for training, so if you have businesses in the county that need help with training, they can contact us, we can help with that. We can also help employees if they've been displaced, if they've been unemployed, we can help provide funding to help them get retrained. One of the things we have right now, we've been really focused on the effort in Canton with closing the Pact of Evergreen. So, we got a grant for $2.5 million to help dislocated workers, but it's not just for people from Pact of Evergreen, anybody in the region who has lost their job because it has left or for some reason that job has gone away, we can provide training or on-the-job training funds to an employer that will hire them. So, it's not just Haywood County, it's not just Pact of Evergreen, anybody fitting that bill, we can help them out. And the easiest way to gain access to those funds, they can go to NC Works, or I know there's not as much of a presence for NC Works in Graham County as there used to be. They can email me at russ@regiona.org and I can get them connected with that opportunity. Our agent department provides funding for services for senior citizens and also helps organize events such as the Elder Abuse Awareness Walk that was on June 15th. We did that in all seven counties and on the Quala Boundary, we had over 800 attendees. We also host the Senior Celebration, which will be September 22nd this year in Swain County, and that's where elders from all seven counties come together. We feed them, we play games, we just kind of celebrate them on that day. Last year, we had over 600 folks from around the county or from the region coming to attend that event. Our agent department also provides funding for meals for elders, so last year we did over 153,000 meals across the seven counties. Over 11,000 of those meals were in Graham County. And then also, we provide respite care funding. We provided that for over 689 families last year and 400 of those hours, 400 hours of respite care ended up being here in Graham County. And basically what that is, is we know that 65% of people who are caring for a family member died before the person they're taking care of. So, we've got funding that if you've got a family member that you're looking after, we can provide funding to bring somebody into the home, give you a break, so that you can take care of yourself a little bit first. We also partnered with Samaritan's Feet to do 100 pair of shoes for people in Graham County, older adults in Graham County last year who needed shoes. Our Community and Economic Development Department continues to focus on housing and broadband. We've done over $12 million into the region for broadband over the last three years. 1.4 million of that was here in Graham County. I saw on the agenda, you all are talking later about the latest announcement of broadband expansion here in Graham County. And our upbacker Scott in our office partnered with Zito to write that grant with them. Also, we helped administer the Southwestern NC Home Consortium, which brings a regular allocation of funding to the region to deal with housing. Last year, $125,000 of that was allocated to the Rural Development Authority here in Graham County to help with the high school class that builds one house every two years. So, we provided funding to help them buy supplies, kind of get that first house going and then hopefully that money starts to revolve for them and they can kind of self-sustain going forward. And then our final department's the Mountain West Partnership, which is designed to help recruit and bring businesses into the region, but also we're proud of the fact that they're contracted with you all here in Graham County to provide your economic development service. Josh Carpenter is our Director of that program. He spent a lot of the last year working with the folks that are moving into Fontana Village and recently, we found out he was awarded a $700,000 grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission to help with the water and sewer infrastructure out there. He's also working, talking about the training funds we have through workforce development, Josh is working to kind of connect those folks because we know if you're going to come in and you're looking for 75 to 125 workers right now, that's going to be an issue. So, they're going to need a lot of support in that world. Two other things. One, I think it's on the agenda later, but we've got our annual dinner Monday. I think it says 5:00, it's actually 5:30, but if you show up at 5:00, we'll be there and we'll have the water flowing at 5:00 o'clock. So, please come, that'll be at Betty's Creek Vineyard in Jackson County. Our board is the elected officials of the west and really that night is about celebrating you all and just showing our appreciation for everything you do. And then the other thing, I think it's on the agenda tonight as well, we're working with the seven counties to do regional planning around opioid settlement funding. I think you all have done some local planning, so any planning anybody's done at a local level, we're starting there and just looking for opportunities to align with other counties or there are opportunities to partner that could help make that money go a little further. So, those are two other things we're doing. And with that, again, thank you for your support, your partnership, and if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Appreciate the partnership. All right, and then I'll transition to the digital inclusion plan, our digital literacy plan.
That's all right. I'll figure that out.
So, while that's coming up, I think I just put my mouse. One of the...you know, we focused on broadband expansion for the last couple of years and what we started to realize is, I mean, while we've still got work to do there, we're starting to get to a place where we have about as many people who have access to internet who just choose not to adopt it as we do people that don't have access to internet. So, some of that effort is starting to go towards digital literacy, which really is just a fancy way of saying we need more people to adopt internet, at least if they want to. I mean, everybody's got the choice to do what they want to do with that. So, this page shows the mission and the vision for what that effort's like. So, we got money from Institute for Emerging Issues, the NC State, this is also supported by Dogwood Health Trust, and our staff came down and worked with local stakeholders to kind of figure out what the key issues were for Graham County. So, the vision that came out of that input is basically to make sure that folks who need access to infrastructure and also, you know, access to devices or computer skills, things like that, have the ability to get that if they want. And then the mission really is just to overcome all the barriers to that to make sure that we can accomplish getting those to those people. Beginning of the plan really gets into the background of the region, some of the demographics here in Graham County, and then the meat of it kind of starts here on page 18. You can see 66.1% of people in Graham County have access to internet at speeds of 25 megabytes per second download, 3 megabytes per second upload. We all know there's problems with broadband mapping, these are the state's numbers, so we have a pretty good feeling this is probably lower in Graham County than actually it is showing. The next line down on the far right shows that 43.5% has subscriptions. So, the gap between those that have access and those that have a subscription, according to these numbers, is about 22%. So, that's kind of who we're looking at is if you have access to internet and you're not taking advantage of that, what are the reasons for that? Is it a lack of device? Is it lack of the ability to pay for a plan? You know, is it just lack of understanding of relevancy of it or is it need for a certain sort of skills? So, that's kind of what we're trying to look at. Down here in the bottom, you see 31.5% just don't have a computer or a device. So, that's almost a 30% of population. Next page down kind of shows from stakeholder input what the assets were in Graham County. So, who are the providers? Where are places that you could go get public Wi-Fi? If you don't have internet access at your home, where could you go and get that? Who's teaching digital literacy skills in the county? So, Tri-County Community College in Five Points. And then where can you get access to internet if you don't...or access to devices if you don't have them? So, who's lending out devices? And then this is kind of the results of the survey. You see some of the quotes on the right, folks talking about missing interviews due to not having internet. A lot of times, you know, we know increasingly healthcare is an issue in rural areas having access to healthcare. One of the solutions to that is telehealth. If you don't have broadband, it's not going to do you a whole lot of good. So, this page kind of lists out what those needs are and then strategic priorities are improving the availability of broadband, so that's the infrastructure piece. The adoption piece is figuring out what the barriers are there and helping to overcome that. Access is having to do with devices and then the fourth one there is just having the organizational structure to be able to support folks that want to have access to internet. Kim, I can't remember if I sent this to you or not, but I can. With this, I mean, we've got...Dogwood Health Trust has given $75,000 they've allocated to Graham County to address the issues that are identified in this plan. So, if you all, you know, and if you need to discuss it and take it up next time, that's fine too. But if you all approve this plan at some point, then what we would do is work with you all to probably just put out a kind of a grant program for Graham County, see who's interested, you know, if it's somebody who's teaching classes, if it's the school system, it may be your senior center, we know that those groups lack access, and then we could work with you all to kind of decide the best place to spend that funding. Any questions about...it's written pretty broadly, so whatever your issues are here, we'll kind of address them, but you're not hemmed in by what that plan is.
Questions?
Do you want to adopt the plan tonight or do you want to take time to read?
I'll hang around. I know you got it on the agenda, like Dale Wiggens, if you have questions, I'll be right back.
So, we don't have an official finance report tonight and just due to a lot of different factors. And we did finalize and the budget was adopted at our last board meeting and we have worked through...we've done a soft close on the fiscal year 22, 23. There are still some expenses that will be coming in that we'll refer back to that fiscal year and to that budget, so we are still incorporating those expenses. We'll see bills probably up in the end of August still that are applying to the last fiscal year, so we won't do a hard close yet on that. The 23, 24 fiscal year has been opened and we are beginning to process payments with that budget in mind. And we've been working a lot with Edmunds Logics, who is our...they have not only our accounting, but also our HR and our payroll, and they're the software company. And they were here Thursday and Friday of last week and helping us identify some issues, helping troubleshoot some things and helping us get our financial systems in a good working order and also providing a lot of the training that we needed to make sure we were utilizing them correctly. So, we're continuing to work with...Ida Taylor is the one that we've been using with Edmunds Gup Tech, and she's the one that has been truly a godsend to us and she's helped us a lot, like, just navigating the different things that are new, not only to me, but also to Taming. So, and then also, we've had Becky Garland and with LGC, she's come in on a consultant basis and has been able to assist us with a lot of the year-end stuff that...it was my first year, obviously, closing a year out and opening a new one, so she's been here assisting us to just navigate that process. Next month, we will have an official report and catch everybody up to date.
Thank you, Stacy. Public comments.
I'll put me down.
You're up.
Good evening. In February, when I tendered my resignation to the Board of Commissioners, I promised the board and the citizens that I would let them know when I landed. And so, for the last couple of months, I did land safely with the local government commission and I am part of the unit coach team. So, I wanted to let the board know kind of how that works and to let the citizens know as well. I'm one of six coaches that is placed strategically across the state. My region stretches from Graham County all the way out to Burke, south to Pope, north to Mitchell, and all the way back. And so, my role will be to provide technical support, as Stacy mentioned, to local government finance and management and boards. So, my primary work at this point is working with units of government that are on the LGC Unit Assistant List. Thankfully, Graham County's not on my list, but also part of my work is to assist any local government in any finance-related issue or problem or question that you have. So, as Stacy mentioned, you know, Graham County's already benefited from the work that we're doing at no cost to the property tax owners, as well as I've helped several small towns, including Robbinsville, and worked through helping with budget. So, I'm really excited to be able to provide these services to the town and to be able to draw on my 35 years as a CPA to help local governments. A lot of times, there's a misconception about the LGC that you only call them when you're in trouble or they only call on you when you're in trouble, and that's not the case. The LGC is here to help. And so, I wanted to just reiterate that I'm here to do what needs to be done to give you the technical support that you need. So, I want you to always feel free to give me a call or send me an email and I'll be glad to assist. I will be on the road some, but I won't be...I'll always be home based in Cherokee County, so I'll be really close, so I'm within a 30-minute drive of you folks. So, I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to just let you know that LGC's here to support you.
Thank you. Discussion items. I'll let you...
I'll let you talk for these final final items.
Okay, the first one was just notice that we had received the grant for the growing rural economics and access to technology, just something that Russ was actually talking about, and so that was just kind of, we'll have to produce some reporting, I think Zito will get with Zito, they'll do reporting first, and then we all get together and report it together. So the required match was Zito is in on that match, so that's not a total Graham County match. Blue Cross Blue Shield, we had a little bit of problem with our pharmacy side, but we got that straightened out. I put the letter in there so y'all could see. It caused us to split companies when we went with the pool. So our health is in one place, and our dental vision is in the other. So it just put us in a different tier level with the pool, where there's 9,000 people, and where we don't have 100, almost 200 here. So they just put us in a different pharmacy bracket, but we did get that all straightened out so everybody could get their medications. So our Southwestern Commission Annual Dinner, I think Russ spoke on that as well, the 5:00 was for the board meeting, so that county usually attends on that, so. And if you want to go and you have not RSVP, please let me know, and I can do that for you. And then we're doing a opioid planning kickoff meeting. I know we had attended the last one in Macon County, and I'll get with our health director, Donna Stevens, and see if we need to go over. I know they have allocated our funding somewhat, but I know it's gonna go in line with the region as well. Is there any questions so far? And do any of you want to attend the group meeting? If you do, it's Wednesday, July 26th, from 12:00 to 4:00, and just let me know if you want to attend, and I'll RSVP there. The next one up, I think, is the polls, and these are, we have three. We had a contract proposal for Mark Masters, that's for the urgent care for our x-ray, and for those that don't know, we're gonna have a state-of-the-art x-ray machine. We're just having to lead line the walls and get all that prepared at the urgent care. So it's one that you can lay down, and it will do, help little children where it can step up, so it can do a lot of functions that we didn't have in the county. So it'd be great, it'll be nice when it gets here. We had another poll to cancel our special meeting on June the 23rd, and then we canceled the one on June the 27th.
Sir, motion approved, please pause. Sir, second. It's on paper.
All right, we have a trial to begin next week in Clay County. We thought we were gonna have to start busing on the 24th. It looks like we'll start busing on the 26th, so if you got a jury letter and you get to go to be on the jury trial, it will be bused to Clay County. That's at the expense of Graham County until we get our new justice center built. We will have to supply the meals for the gurars and the ones that go from here, I do have that taken care of, so.
Are they doing the selection here?
They will do the selection here, that helped us, yeah. It could last up to three weeks, so that would be two weeks in Clay County and one week in Cherokee County, at no cost to use the courthouse. They did waive the cost for the county on that and wanting to be good neighbors.
In Clay County?
In Clay County. So far, in Cherokee County, they have not issued a fee unless they come back with something different.
Just meals and transportation and all that?
Yeah, just meals and transportation.
I've talked with Dan Brown about that, and I think they probably are gonna waive any kind of fees at the courthouse, so I don't think we're gonna get charged for that.
And the last thing is, you know, we have with the back-to-school. Brady Cody had reached out to me and asked me if we were planning to do anything this year, and that Kelsey's office was planning to do a back-to-school bash, so I didn't know if you wanted to have some conversation on that. I think the lunches are free this year, I'm pretty sure, so we don't have to worry about the kids getting eats, but what about the...
The technology fees is always something that is, and that goes on our senior debt, and it will continue to accumulate as the years go by, so it's a $25 payment per family, per family. So if you have multiple students, you're only paying one tech fee, but that, it covers the cost of their electronic device, whether it's, some of the younger classes have like the iPads, and then the older kids, once they get into it, they actually have Chromebooks, so that covers the fee for that, and it's just kind of like an insurance, so that they turn those back to them for the charges and that type of thing. So the backpacks last year, I think, was super great, but the timing was, I feel like, not great. Most by the point that we got them, just because I have small children, by the time we got them, most people had already purchased their home. And so the timing was a bit off. So I feel like if we did something more along the lines of the tech fees, you know, volunteer and to pay, and I'm not saying everybody's, but I mean, if somebody has a need and that they need their technology fees to be waived, could the county step up and take care of them? That's just a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Or, I mean, you could have people that have needs for the backpacks and school supplies, you know, contact us.
How much do we spend this year doing?
$200,000. What the hell? I want, it felt like $200,000.
It's about $35,000.
About $35,000. You see, I stretched that one. I had two weeks, I had a week and a half, I think, two weeks to get 600 backpacks together, and so I was like panicking this year. I don't think I can do that.
No.
Yeah. But the $25 fee is a big deal for some families here.
I know that for ECI members, that the tribe covers all of their fees, so theirs is not a necessity, but it is for the non-impulsed members.
Yes, that number.
And I think that's all, except for if you have any newer business.
Any newer business. All right, I'll take a motion to go into closed session under GS 14331881356. Praise for confidential information, but any non-praised personnel contracts in 10 minutes. Is there a motion? Sir, second.